Alexander County Board of Education for March 29, 2021 to order. And as usual, I would like for us to please open with just a moment of silence. Thank you. I'd like to recognize Ms. Bridget Ryan for our pledge of allegiance.
Please stand. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Ryan. Board members, you've had the opportunity to look over the agenda, but we've had a renewed interest in the property of the old Whittenburg Elementary School. The county has a renewed interest in that, so I would like to take that off of the agenda tonight. I just feel as if that is an avenue that we need to make sure that we've covered all our bases, making sure that that's not a possible joint project down the road. So I guess I would be looking for and motion for to mend the agenda with the removal of the selection of realtor.
Matt Cooksey, I make the motion.
Bridget Ryan, second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? Those in favor of mending the agenda by subtracting out Section A under new business, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, please say no. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, now I will recognize Dr. Jennifer Heffner, Superintendent for reentry plans for grade six through 12.
Thank you, Chairman Schrum, members of the board. I have a brief presentation. This is really just information for you. It is in your agenda. It's attached to the agenda. And Dr. Clower, if we'll get it pulled up and we'll get ready to roll. Tonight, you are faced with the decision as far as a start date in the event you decide that transitioning to Plan A is most appropriate for the school system. And I just wanted to start by sharing the parent survey results. There were 479 unduplicated responses, and by removing duplicate addresses in a Power School query, there were approximately 1,225 families who had the opportunity to respond, and this represents approximately 559 of the 1,408 high school students. So what all that really means is we only took one response per family. I did find it interesting sometimes that even in the same family, when multiple responses were given, they were not always in agreement. So the way that we did that, we removed the one that was submitted last and kept the first submission if multiple responses were given for the same family. But again, we received 479 unduplicated responses. You can see from the pie chart that 50.8% preferred to stay in Plan B, 43.5% of those responding wanted to transition to Plan A, and then 5.6% of those families responding had no preference. They would be okay either way. Now, I was intrigued by something that the board received today, asking you all to feel compelled to decide whether we go into Plan A or Plan B. Well, we already have been in Plan B. We've been in Plan B since August 17th, and the only change to that, we did transition the elementary schools to Plan A, and I believe, I don't have the exact date, but I think that was sometime in November. So really, what's in question tonight for the board will be, do we continue the year with grade six through 12 in Plan B, or do we also transition all or part of those students to Plan A? And what Plan A means is full capacity with no fewer than four days per week. Some school systems have already made this transition to Plan A. Some chose to go four days a week with one remote day, and some school systems throughout the state did decide to go back five days per week. If we go the route of Plan A, based on staff feedback for what has been most helpful to them this year in having a successful year and what resources they need moving forward, you all saw, excuse me, you all saw those responses over the weekend, and I bet you read many, 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 many times, if you read through the entire chart of responses, that Wednesday being a remote day has been very, very helpful to them. Not only have they been doing lesson plans, but also, most recently, students have been called in for small group tutorials on Wednesdays, and that has just been very helpful to the staff. So Plan A, if that is your choice, I would recommend that it be a four-day week, the way it has been with elementary, with Wednesdays being a remote day for students. Moving along, I know that we have fielded a lot of questions after the bill was approved to return students to school. It was actually called returning students to school with no reference to a plan, but in that bill, some special language was put in there about students who have an IEP. We often call them EC students and then students with a 504, and that is a specialized plan, but it is not an IEP for those particular students. I wanted you all to see what we are working with at each of the four schools in question, grade six through 12. At ACHS, you can see that we have 110 children in the EC program, also 116 children with 504s. At the Early College AEC, no children with an EC IEP, but we do have 29 with 504s. At East Alexander, 54 with EC IEPs, 46 with 504s, and at West Alexander Middle, 50 children are in the EC program with IEPs, 29 with 504s. You see bullets across from each of those schools. At ACHS, I want you all to understand that all the Occupational Course of Study students are already back four days a week if they chose that. Parents have still been given the option for a virtual option, and that's mandated in the law as well. Every school system has to offer a virtual option. We do have children in the Virtual Academy, grades K-12, but all Occupational Course of Study students are back four days a week. You see at East and at West, all of the self-contained EC students are already back four days a week. So I wanted you to have that information. Moving along to the next slide. Oh, and before we do that, sorry. That was a requirement already for those children with EC and 504s, but we have not surveyed to see how many want to go into the virtual setting and how many want to come back full-time if that is the choice tonight with Plan A. Mr. Cooksey.
I hate to make you backtrack, but back to the pie chart. I'm just a little confused, and when you correct me, and if I'm stupid, that's okay. But how does it represent 559 students but 1,225 families? I'm just a little confused.
Because some families have multiple children at the high school.
But then I would expect the 559 be much higher. You see, it says 559 of the high school students. In other words, it's almost like it's reversed. Am I the only one that sees it that way?
479 unduplicated responses. If we hadn't taken out some of the multiple responses, it would have been 559 children.
Okay, you're saying it for, and then, okay, now, I'm sorry. That's where I was getting confused was of the families. And then, did we not survey the middle school? Is that what?
We did not, and primarily, actually, there was no intention of surveying families until chatter in the community started about the possibility of transitioning to Plan A, and Mr. Palmer fielded a lot of, and I'm not going to define a lot, but there were concerns voiced to him by students and parents of students who have taken jobs working 30 to 40 hours a week and how that would negatively impact their jobs and that sort of thing. So at that point, I made the decision to conduct the survey for high school parents only. To my knowledge, we don't have any middle school students working 30 to 40 hours a week. Okay? Did that answer your questions?
Yes, I saw where I was misunderstanding.
Okay, thank you. Another biggie that has been discussed, transportation. And bus routes will change again with a transition to a Plan A. As far as some student pickup and drop-off times, we will need to contact parents with those new stop times, and due to families going on vacation, there was a concern about contacting parents during spring break. Also, in talking to our four administrators today, I have spoken to Mr. Palmer, Mr. Evans, Mr. Lille, and Mrs. Love today personally. Some of their staff will be vacationing over spring break also, so we need to make a decision so that we can get parents contacted this week if we have to modify the bus routes. But current students interested in returning to full-time four days a week from the Virtual Learning Academy, you can see numbers there. ACHS has 30 students who would like to come back full-time from the academy. AEC, 25 students wanting to come back full-time face-to-face. East had eight with five needing bus transportation, and West has five students from the Virtual Academy, and three of those would need bus transportation. And we felt like that we could make accommodations spanning all of the face-to-face classes. We couldn't do it the other way. We couldn't open it up and say, how many of you would want to go from your hybrid model now to Virtual Academy, because that would create a lot of teacher shifting, I'm afraid, if we had a big influx of students wanting to do that. And with as few days as we have to finish out this school year, I don't want to change around any staff at this point. So do you understand the transportation slide? Start and drop-off times, excuse me, and pickup times would change slightly, and parents would need to be contacted immediately. Yes, Chairman Schrum?
Have we, do we have a scenario of any students that would have an extreme change, especially the early morning pickup?
I can't imagine it being terribly extreme, but I don't know that for sure. I know that Mr. McCurdy has been working on that with some of his staff, but I can't speculate how much the pickup and drop-off times would change.
Okay. And in turn with that, you know, I've had quite a few parents to say, you know, why don't we just increase the amount of buses? And maybe we could use extra monies to do that, but my, but the big problem is, we don't have drivers.
Correct. But also, you don't get a new bus just overnight either. All of that takes paperwork to be filed and submitted and that sort of thing, and like I said, we looked at the calendar today, and coming back on April 12th, which that's the return date from spring break, there are 30 school days left excluding Wednesdays. So that's all we're really dealing with from the time we return from spring break to the end of the school year. And you just can't make stuff like that happen. You can't get buses, and you can't just find drivers. We're always looking for drivers. We have that vacancy posted all the time.
So with the 30 days that you're speaking of, then in reality, we're talking 15 days of change for A students and 15 days of change for B students.
Correct.
And that's exams included in?
Included in that also. That is from April 12th to the last day of school, and like Mr. Lauterment said, exams are included in that.
Could I ask a question in regards to that?
Yes.
As a former classroom teacher and knowing the high school schedule, I know the AP exams fall pretty quickly. Roughly, what date are we looking at that they would even be starting them?
First two weeks in May.
First two weeks in May.
For AP exams, not end of grade and end of course testing, but AP, yes.
And the middle school, are they still testing on a two-week window?
Yes.
Basically?
Yes. Last 10 days, that's the way it's still written, yes.
So in all reality, that 30 days is, you know, we gotta face it, it's really not 30 days.
It's not 30 days of instruction. You're correct.
Right.
And Dr. Heffner?
Yes.
You're still using proctors? In other words, from, you may have to use proctors from East to go to the high school or high school?
Actually, we've been given flexibility on proctors. And if I told you that I know the exact proctor schedule and plan, I really don't. I know that we have been approved that we can do roving proctors and things of that nature, but I'll be honest with you, if I were a teacher, I would want a proctor just because a lot of allegations can be made with testing, and that stuff's serious. You could lose your teaching license if you're found to be negligent in some of those testing requirements. Yes, Mr. Cooksey?
A parent asked me a question, which I did not answer, but I also could not answer. They were saying that the elementary kids were on their own buses now and not in our mixed model.
Correct, because they can be seated.
Is that correct?
We can have more per seat than we can on the middle school bus. We're still held to Plan B because we're still in Plan B with middle and high, so we can only have one per seat. We can have two per seat with elementary children.
So if we go to, back to Plan A, will we go back to the mixed buses again like we started the school year?
I don't know that it would have to happen that way with every situation, but I know in talking to those four principals today, the two middle school principals were convinced that we would need to recombine those children again.
And if that happens, what number are you looking at roughly on them buses?
I think that the capacity, the number of seats, then, I guess we could have anywhere from 48 to 52 or 54, depending on the size of the bus.
I just know that was a concern. You know, when the buses originally consolidated, it was the number that to be on a bus, and that was even before COVID.
Didn't we say that when there was one per seat, it was about 26 somewhere in that neighborhood? Yeah. So make that, multiply that times two per seat. That's where I got that number. So anywhere.
And of course, we won't know that need, like you said, without surveying the parents at that point, and that's going to be a logistic problem also with where that time period falls.
I just don't anticipate a lot of fluctuation with buses, because honestly, I just feel like even on the hybrid, either you're an AA day or a BB day, if you need the bus, you need the bus. I can't imagine now going four days and suddenly a lot of children needing a bus that haven't needed it before.
I was thinking of the scenario if the students that did possibly have a job, that if they're in tune to working, say, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, and they're in school for Thursday and Friday, then that could have some effect on it.
It might.
But like I said, it's an unknown at this point.
Right.
Yep.
But like I said, I don't think our bus numbers will change that much. I just think that putting the middle school back with the elementary school would be the biggest change. Yes, Mr. Lauterment?
Dr. Heffner, you may be going to answer this anyway, but if we go back, say, to Plan A, the high school, will that be like business as usual? Will they, will they stay in the same classrooms, or will they change?
They'll change classrooms. They have to. It's not as convenient like at the middle schools where we are rotating teachers and children stay in one room, because children take all kinds of courses. So when you have your math block or whatever, you might be taking Math 3, Math 4, you know, it's not like it is at the middle school.
So with that being said, will they normally, will they change like normal, I guess is what I'm saying?
They will have class changes, yes. And some of the other I may answer when we get to the physical distancing. That's a little bit later on another slide, okay? The most pressing issues that we need to consider tonight, as far as just things, items for thought. When I talked to the four principals today, and I said, you know, you've been mulling this over, you've read the new toolkit guidelines and that sort of thing, what's your most difficult thing to accomplish in Plan A? And pretty much across the board, lunches. And the reason being is because you cannot eat or drink with a mask on. You have to have your mask off. And if you all had an opportunity to watch the ABC recording, the ABC Science Collaborative, you heard Dr. Benjamin say that masking continues, continues, continues to be critical in stopping the spread of COVID. And when they are eating and drinking at lunch, you cannot have on a mask. So did you hear him say, you must adhere to that six feet of physical distance between students? Well, obviously, every school just has one cafeteria and a lot of children to put through that and to keep them six feet apart. So lunches will be difficult. Also, with some classrooms, there will be issues with the number of students. Mr. Palmer has spoken about several classrooms, three or four here at the high school with 28 and 29 in those classes. That will be an issue, but being the leader that he is, he's been working on this issue and figuring out where he can relocate those classrooms, such as media center, different areas throughout the building that are larger for a group that large, and keep in mind, like I said, it's only three or four classes with that many children in them. Changes being made this close to the end of the year can be disruptive as far as, you know, routines and that sort of thing. I saw some comments from teachers, it will be like, the week that we start this will be like a brand-new school year, where everybody's getting acclimated and that sort of thing with having more folks in the building and different students than they have been seeing, so it could be disruptive in some cases. Also, I would stress that you all know that staff members, every staff member had the option to take the vaccines. The first vaccine was given on March 3rd. The second vaccine will be given this Wednesday on the 31st, and if you've been reading the research, it is recommended that you aren't really, I guess, immune, and not that you totally are anyway, but I did see something today that said 90%, so that's good news. But you really need to still be very cautious for 14 days after the last shot. Well, 14 days from this Wednesday would put us coming back then full force on April 15th. That's just something, again, just for you to ponder. If Plan A is chosen, all students, with the exception of the current Virtual Academy students, would attend face-to-face, Mondays, Tuesdays, Thursdays, Fridays, and again, Wednesdays. I would recommend that we continue to use that as a remote day for students with deep cleaning, meetings, extra tutorials, et cetera. Now, some specific information from the high school. I want to dispel some of what's out in the community as far as very high failure rates and that sort of thing. So that's why I put this slide in here. And I would say with any child, face-to-face, okay, let me rephrase it. Not with any child, but let's just say with most children. Face-to-face learning experiences are very different from virtual learning experiences, because a teacher can look at Marty, Bridget, you know, whomever, and ask some questions. Do you have any questions, Marty? Do you understand the problem? We've just worked. Or Bridget, you didn't turn in your homework today. What's happening? You know, homework is important, but I see that you have three missing assignments. What can we do to get those assignments completed and turned in? A face-to-face experience is just very different from a virtual. And will students be more successful? Well, yes, they will in a face-to-face setting, because they are getting that one-on-one, you know, that direct contact with the teacher. The high school, they were able to show an improvement in the fall semester by adding more face-to-face instruction on those remote Wednesdays. And, you know, four days a week with a person looking at them, asking questions, giving instruction, and allowing students to interact and ask questions, it's just more effective for the most part for most children. So the benefits for the high school is that they would have two additional days of that face-to-face interaction. They would not be optional, and we would also provide transportation. Those are pluses. And they're not going to be half-days or only for particular courses. They're going to be just, you know, in the student's regular schedule. Now, the rumor was is that the high school had 50% of their students failing, and I can tell you that is incorrect. They had approximately 27%, and they have narrowed that down to 18% not making academic progress. So anybody who has said out in the community, well, half the kids at the high school are failing, you know, the way it is, that's not true, and I wanted you to have that tidbit of information directly from the high school principal. Another piece of information that we are preparing for pertains to band and chorus, because obviously, you cannot play a band instrument with a mask on, and I can't imagine that you could sing very well with a mask on. I guess it could be done. But they are looking at aerosol studies to be able to continue band and chorus if we transition to Plan A, and they are going to use active and passive control measures to reduce the risk of spreading bio-aerosol emissions to reduce as many exposures as possible. So see, they're already talking about those things. It's not like we haven't had some time to have these conversations. And then I just open it to you all for questions of me. Really, my job tonight was just to present data to you, to answer questions, and to help you with having conversation needed to make a decision.
If you would humor me for just a few minutes, I'd like to correct some additional misinformation in the community that's probably not quite as politically correct as your corrections.
I try to be. I make enough people mad, and I'm trying to be politically correct.
Several things that just need to be brought to the attention of what the correct information is. First of all, I can't tell you how many teachers and students or parents that have called all of us that, and that's what we're for. I'm not complaining about that, but we've been scolded quite a bit about not bringing our students back after Christmas, but that was not an option. And I just want people to understand that the governor's mandate required us not to be in Plan A for six through 12.
Correct.
And that, the reason this is a conversation now is because that mandate from him has changed, but it was not an option at Christmas. Another one, no board decision has been made at this point. I can promise you that. There are seven different people up here that have very strong opinions and that are very capable of thinking through all the data that's been brought to them. No decision has been made at this point. And I'm sure the reason people in the community think we've already have made this decision is because we asked that the middle schools and the high school have a plan in place. Okay? Now, would we have been doing our job if we would not had a return to Plan A plan in place at all four schools, both middle schools, the high school, and the early college? And the answer is?
Chairman Schrum, the truth is, we've been having conversations since August about how we would make transitioning to Plan A a success.
Absolutely, absolutely. And that's the way it should have taken place. But I think the point when then we moved to the point where we said, let's make sure that we know what the plan is, we have a plan in place, that's when it became, well, we've already made our decision. That is not the case. Also, a lot of questions about why the middle school was not surveyed. We didn't ask for a survey at the high school. Just making that clear.
Correct.
That was additional information that Central Office and the high school thought that we should have, in addition to, you know, the numerous calls and emails and, you know, data that's been provided, but we didn't ask for any surveys at any point.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Let's see. Also, normal, back to normal, was never an option, okay? For us to go back to school five days a week, including Wednesdays, with no social distancing is not an option. That is, cannot be an option, and it never has been at this point. Summer school will be offered to those that need additional, you know, classroom time. Now, here's another aspect of that. Are they, are our parents going to take advantage, or are our students going to take advantage of that? We can't force that, correct?
Correct. It is not mandated, but we will be offering it, yes.
We will be offering that. So that's another thing that needs to be cleared up, that we're forcing that. That's not a force, but I almost wish that we could. It would sure help. I mean, back when I was in school, if you had to have summer school, you were going to summer school. And, but we can't do that now, okay? Also, 504s and IEPs, that also is a parent option, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So that's not automatic that they return to Plan A even if we're in Plan B, because the way I read it, 504s and IEPs will be back in the school when students are back in the school, okay? But that's if the parent requests that.
What that means is, just to make sure that everybody understands, the middle and high schools are still in Plan B. And if you all decide to keep them in Plan B, then those children that I gave you the numbers with an EC, IEP, or a 504 will be given an opportunity to come the four days a week, even though in Plan B, it's AA and BB. And of course, that just makes sense. Those students need some additional support, and that is the way they would get it, would be to increase them to four days a week. But it's still a parent choice.
And also, I don't know what other option that maybe teachers were under the impression that they would have because you alluded a little bit to this last statement. I'm going to actually read it.
Okay, please do, because I was intrigued with it also.
Okay. Well, this is from a teacher, and I don't mean this disrespectful. I mean it in a way that is there something in the school system that we're not aware that's being spread that may be another option to us? Because anyhow, it was a very well-written email, and the last line, and the basis of the email was that, you know, didn't think we should be going into Plan A, that we should stay in what I assume they mean is Plan B. But the last line says, "We would appreciate it if the school board members would ask for a vote for Plan A or Plan B for the remainder of the 2020, 2021 school year." So that adds to my confusion of what other option may be out there that we're not aware of.
Well, I was hoping that you would know, Chairman Schrum, because I didn't know any other option that we had tonight.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to clear that up.
Okay.
All right.
Mr. Schrum, while we're clearing things up, I would like the community to understand that we all follow the requirements, the CDC, the, all the requirements that are given for schools. We are fully aware of those requirements, and I think everyone would agree to that, that it's something that we have to follow, we all know about. And if we don't understand, we get the answer and ask to understand it. But I think sometimes that's in the community as well, that we don't even know what the requirements are.
If we knew how many times every one of these board members have read from the toolkit that is our guidelines, then we're very aware. And then the last point I want to make to clear up, and I'm sure there's others that other board members want to address, but the other issue is, this is not political. I have heard enough that this has drawn down political lines, and it has absolutely nothing to do with politics. The way my decision is based on this, and I'm sure other board members also, is we weigh the difference of, are we doing the kids an injustice by bringing them back, by disruption of the room, or is the extra time face-to-face beneficial? That's the bottom line. And we can, can we keep them safe? But that's the bottom line. There's not a political line that some of us are going to, that are going to be on one side or the other. I know all of these members very well, and we have nothing but our students' health and success as our concern.
Correct.
And I'll stop my rant. Okay? Any other board members?
You said lunches is proven to be an issue, and we have to have the six-foot, and I listened to, I came, Dr. Benjamin.
Dr. Benjamin, yes.
I listened to it this morning driving to work.
Yes.
And very interesting, and he was concerned about athletics, which we, you know, as a community, followed the news, we knew that athletics got touchy this winter. He's concerned about lunches, and he's concerned about masking. And, you know, and I'm ready to throw them away myself. And some of my colleagues tell me it's becoming more of a strain just to keep after students to make sure, and I hear they're doing a good job, but they said it's just getting like a broken record, just repeat, put your mask up, put your mask up, put your mask up. The lunch part, though, I'll be honest with you, you know, I know we've all heard from a lot, and I've heard a lot of concerns about lunches. What, I mean, it's proven to be an issue. What, what's the plan? I mean, I'll be honest with you, I had somebody said that it's going to be sitting in the floor in the hall. And I hope that that's not the plan, but I don't think that would be an option. But what is the plan?
The plan here at the high school, when I talked to Mr. Palmer, is that they will be serving for lunches.
Okay.
And they will be spreading out to commons area, courtyard, other places in the building, even using some classrooms if needed. The bottom line, Mr. Robinson, is that whatever the decision is, if tonight, if the decision is to transition to Plan A, we have some smart folks leading in these schools, and they will get it figured out some way. Now, I hope a last resort is sitting in a hallway eating a lunch. But you heard Dr. Benjamin, he recommended going outside for lunches as much as possible on beautiful days. I would dare say most children would want to be outside. But when you have bad weather, that's where it presents an issue. But I will say that whatever the decision is, these principals, they're ready to work with their staff members and figure out a safe plan.
I don't mean to catch you off guard on this question, and if it does catch you off guard, that's fine. But as far as not having that information, but approximately, how long do we have for a lunch period at the high school and a lunch period at the middle school?
Thirty minutes at the high school. We were going to run four 30-minute lunches in third block.
And just a typical average lunch period is typically about 25 minutes, 25 to 30.
I'm just going to repeat, Mr. Palmer from the audience said it was four periods of 30 minutes each, just in case someone didn't catch that.
Okay.
Approximately 300 per lunch.
Bringing in 300 students per lunch.
And then, middle school?
Middle school, the time period. Like I said, the average time for lunch is always 25 to 30 minutes, even in elementary schools.
So that doesn't vary there?
Not much.
But logistically, we think we can, I'm sorry, logistically, with having to go outside or other accommodations, that still fall into that same time period?
Now, that I can't answer, but I can tell you one thing for sure. We cannot adhere to the six feet of physical distancing.
Without, without.
Without going outside the perimeters of the cafeteria. Mr. Palmer, your third block is where you typically do lunch already, correct? And then some classes would go and?
We're in a traditional schedule. We have lunches in third block. That's traditionally how it's always done. We have a smart lunch. We do it in between second and third.
Okay.
So this is like a very traditional lunch schedule.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
If you were, if you were in the middle of a, or towards two-thirds of a traditional school year, the number or percentage of students that are failing and are behind compared to your statistics now, how much difference would that be as a percentage?
We typically look at what's called academic progress. So academic progress means you're passing three out of four classes. So if you meet that, then you're progressing the way you should for high school at a minimum. So we are typically anywhere between 5% to 10% that are now making academic progress that we're constantly working with to get them to academic progress. This year, we have seen a slight uptick to about 18% now making academic progress. We started at 27, and then we use our interventions, lots of call homes, lots of letters home, working with counselors, teachers, administrators, where we were able to get to 27 to 18. So in the grand scheme of things, two days a week, I feel like we were very successful with that. And other schools may not have been as successful that surround us, that surround our county. Typically, it's 5% to 10%. Those are your most adverse students. We were at 18, sorry.
Okay. Thank you for that answer.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, board members, you've heard the concerns and, as I would say, the assets and the liabilities of where we're at right now and where our possibilities are. I guess at this point, we're, do we want more board discussion, or are we opening the floor for a recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we remain in Plan B at both middle schools and the high school for the remainder of the academic school year.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Well, I'll put it here. It's not quite the discussion on the motion, but so for time's sake. I just want to, there was a lot of input that came, and I know a lot of times we fuss about it, but I thank people for sharing.
Sure.
I really do. And I tried to write back, and there was a couple just telling them I received it. I want the public to kind of understand, we can't discuss this with you. So a lot of times, the best we can manage is politely thanking you for sharing. That's just the way it works. So thank you for sharing. And I also wanted to bring up the political thing. I honestly came in tonight not knowing where I stood. I see, the way I've always viewed it is that there's no political agenda. There's students, teachers, parents, and sometimes community that I'm concerned over. Sometimes the community comes into play, sometimes it doesn't. In this particular case, we were looking at students mostly and somewhat looking at teacher concerns, and parents' concerns probably fell into a third for me in this particular case. I'm just sharing you how I thought. And when I did that and used that rubric, often I had the comments and the thoughts given to me and shared made me want to go both ways. Sometimes they were this way, and it was persuasive. Sometimes it was this way, and it was persuasive. And I've never felt that conflicted probably ever before. This is a very difficult thing for me, and I just wanted to share with you all, it is, because this is another issue going on in our community right now, but it was not a political issue, and it was not something that we all had a decision that was made. We really did want the feedback. We really did want to hear it, and we really were concerned of what everybody was. At least, that's how I saw it.
Sure. That's my thoughts also. And the really pulling part to me is that that's been one of the hardest decisions that I've made as a school board member, is that we don't know the outcome if, how many students may move ahead and pass a course or pass to graduate. We don't know how many of those students that we could have moved forward by going into Plan A. And we don't know how many students that we could have lost by going into Plan A because they have full-time jobs. And I know for sure of three parents that I've talked to that have made it clear that if we went to Plan A, that those three students, that they would have a real hard time convincing them to come back to school because they were full-time employed. So this, it's a tough decision, tough decision. And, you know, the, some of the thought process, I would have not, two or three weeks ago, would not even considered some of these issues. And so it's a full gamut. Any other discussion?
Well, I would just like to say, and I've said it from back in October when we discussed the elementary going back to school, I just, we're doing our kids such a disservice by not having them in school. I know everybody's saying, well, it's only so many days. It's just a handful of weeks. But, you know, I look at the kids that need school, and there are kids that need school. And I just feel kind of heartbroken for those kids. I think, you know, we're the Board of Education. We're in the job of educating students. And they just get so much more education, like you said, when they're face-to-face.
Absolutely.
And so it just, I know the motion's to stay in Plan B, but I just had to say that I think we're doing our kids a disservice.
I understand your sentiments exactly because I...
This has been one of the hardest decisions for me this time and the last time I served on the board. And I'll tell you, I had, you know, I don't take this decision lightly. I've said this before, and I'll say it again, I've, you know, you pray about decisions that you make individually and collectively. And this is no different this time than last. And, you know, somebody's going to be mad at us one way, or somebody's going to be mad at us the other way. But just like Mr. Cooksey said, I've, I probably received somewhere around 175 emails, texts, phone calls, and I'm not exaggerating. And that's fine. I love input. I want people to do that. And it's so great to see people engaged enough to contact the Board of Education. But with that being said, you know, there is, there is a lot of data that we have to go on. There's a lot of medical, local medical information that we receive. And obviously, we give a lot of thought to what our faculty and staff and students and parents all tell us in this. And I've tried to respond the best that I could to each one of the emails that I got. Some of them I may not have. But this, this is not a decision that any of us is taking for granted. It's not one we're taking lightly, and no decision we make is going to be an easy one. Thank you.
And speaking of responding to text messages and emails, and of course, along with being board chair, also comes with that, a lot of people reaching out that, because they go online and they find that number and they find that email address. And I cannot tell you how many emails I've had, but I can tell you that I've had 61 phone conversations today. And my wife and I, well, no, 62. I'm sorry, Bridgette, your number is 62.
You cut me off. You hung up on me.
Well, the phone went dead, yeah. So my wife and I actually counted that late this afternoon. So if I have not responded, it's because there's not been enough minutes in the day as to this point. So, but anyhow, I also am appreciative of the input from the community, and it's been a, it's been a tough one.
I'd like to add, you know, when I run for board, you know, we knew there's going to be tough decisions. Being a high school teacher just two years ago, I know what a drag the end of the year was anyway, how it could just be tiring, tough anyway. I can't imagine, well, I can't imagine to an extent, because I'm living part of my job now. When I look at 30 days to go, and I get that we might be doing them an injustice but not bringing them back full-time. But when you factor in exams, you factor in, everybody's lives are set in routines. I get it. We've heard from a lot of people. I get that. Ours is. We've relied on grandparents. We've relied on aunts and uncles. I think at the end of the day, you know, like you said, people's going to be mad one way or the other. Being in that classroom, knowing what it is in a normal year, knowing what we've been through, I think we got to start looking our eyes towards next year, getting ready to be strong when we open up again. And I appreciate all the information. I appreciate everybody that called me. You're welcome to call and email me anytime you want as part of serving. So, but I will say this, I appreciate my colleagues I used to teach with. I understand where you're coming from. I've been there. It's a little different right now. As a parent, I'm ready for my kids to be back full-time. But I also understand that, you know, sometimes you have to factor in a little common sense. You know, what do you have at the end of the day left? And so it's not an easy decision, so.
Any further discussion?
I would just like to make one comment regarding the executive order 204. I would just like to make one comment regarding the executive order 204 and how it relates to schoolchildren, school employees, administrators, and the like. Executive Order 204 offers more protection to North Carolina bar-goers than it does schoolteachers, custodians, bus drivers, school administrators, resource officers, and the like. What really confounds me is our reopening plan would move our middle school and high schools to 100% capacity. But yet, if we were sending those children to a bar in North Carolina, that's 50% capacity with six feet social distancing. So I have some real issues with Executive Order 204. And, you know, we have been successful thus far. I voted in opposition in October to the elementary kids returning as they did, but the stats showed that there was success, but yet there was sickness as well. And we've made it three-quarters of the way through this academic year. In last meeting, we were lauding our successes with the cleanliness and the hard work by all the staff and the administration and the students. But I think we need to finish this year out in the middle and high school just exactly like we started. And, but having a disagreement with the way that the governor and his team view bars and capacities compared to schools, you know, and they referenced the dimmer switch in this phased reopening. Well, if they would have read that a little more, it's rather contradictory that you offer more protection to bar-goers than you do students in North Carolina schools.
Any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor to remain in Plan B for grades six through 12. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no.
No.
Okay. Motion carries. Okay. So, moving on.
Motion to adjourn.
Yep. We'll need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay.